I would like to begin our caucus before calling our legislative session to order. Okay, council members, Mr. Parker will lead us in roll call following the meeting being officially called to order. Uh, Councilwoman Daniels will not be joining us this evening. Is anyone interested in leading the invocation? Okay. Okay, uh, let's see. I know, no, okay, we'll go with Councilman Rodriguez if you wouldn't mind stepping in and leading us in the invocation and Councilman Majors, if you could lead us in the pledge. Thank you both for your assistance. We have two orders of communication this evening. First is a presentation by Ms. Jennifer Wintermeyer. She serves as the Executive Director of the Tri-County Community Action. She'll be sharing on the Great Harrisburg Litter Cleanup. Our second communications will be heard a presentation by Ms. Rhonda Mays on the 50th anniversary of the Harrisburg Fair Housing Council. We will then move to courtesy of the floor, followed by approval of minutes. Please take a few minutes to review the legislative session minutes of March fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. We will then have reports of committees. The first report you will hear will be from Chair Majors on behalf of the Building and Housing Committee on the Work Session of April fourth, two thousand and twenty-three. And I will try to fill in for both Chair Lawson and Chair Daniels on the Work Session of April fourth, two thousand and twenty-three. Uh, we do not have any ordinances for first reading. There are no ordinances for amendment. And there are no ordinances for final passage. We will then move to resolutions. We have Resolution twenty-seven of two thousand and twenty-three, which we will vote upon. Resolution thirty of two thousand and twenty-three, which we will vote upon. Resolution thirty-one of two thousand and twenty-three, which we will vote upon. Resolution thirty-two of two thousand and twenty-three, which we will vote upon. Resolution thirty-three of two thousand and twenty-three, which we will vote upon. Resolution thirty-four of two thousand and twenty-three will move to the Administration Committee. Resolution thirty-five of two thousand and twenty-three will move to the Community and Economic Development Committee. Resolution thirty-six of two thousand and twenty-three will move to the Community and Economic Development Committee. Resolution thirty-seven of two thousand and twenty-three will also move to the Community and Economic Development Committee. Resolution thirty-eight of two thousand and twenty-three will move to the Administration Committee. Resolution thirty-nine of two thousand and twenty-three will move to the Administration Committee. Resolution forty of two thousand and twenty-three will move to the Administration Committee. And Resolution forty-one of two thousand and twenty-three will move to the Parks Recreation and Enrichment Committee. Is there any old business, council members? Hey, any new business? Okay. Anything else? Okay. We'll call the meeting to order in about one minute. Thank you. It is six o'clock PM. I would like to call our legislative session to order. Mr. Parker, could you please call the roll?
Yes. Ms. Daniels. Ms. Green.
Present.
Mr. Lawson. Mr. Majors.
Here.
Ms. Rawls.
Present.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Present.
And Ms. Bowers.
Present, thank you. Uh, we will, uh, veer from our printed agenda this evening. Our invocation will be led by Councilman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, as the year goes on, we are looking over ninety-eight hundred people killed in our country due to gun violence so far in two thousand and twenty-three. And um, that's not to minimize anyone, but um, definitely want to have a moment of silence for the school in Nashville and the victims to the bank shooting in Louisville. And um, just anyone that lost someone to unfortunate gun violence in our country. Can we have a moment of silence, please? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilman Rodriguez. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilman Majors.
Alright, you can all all that are, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you very much, Councilman Majors. We will now move to our communications. I would like to invite Ms. Jennifer Wintermeyer to the dais. To if you could please come right in front of us. And if you wouldn't mind, um, speaking directly into the microphone, you will have to turn it on. There's like a little gray button kind of in the middle. Yes, and you might want to move it closer to you.
Okay, I'll do my best to project as well. So thank you so much, uh, Madam President and Council for the opportunity to come and talk to you about the Eleventh Annual Great Harrisburg Litter Cleanup, which is coming up on Earth Day, April twenty-second. We invite um, everybody who is or loves this city to volunteer that morning beginning at eight AM to help us pick up street trash and tires from our neighborhoods. There are three central meeting locations. Um, one is our main office in Derry Street in Allison Hill. A second is at three twenty-nine Harris Street in Midtown. And the third is at the Wesley Union AME Zion Church at the corner of Fifth and Camp Streets in Uptown. Um, we highly encourage folks to pre-register on our website at cactri county dot org slash GHLC for Great Harrisburg Litter Cleanup. But you are able to show up the morning of and register to help out. We, in addition to looking for volunteers to help pick up trash, we are looking for a few volunteers who will also help as dumpster monitors. These folks will stay around the dumpster locations to make sure that illegal dumpers and other uh, not good people, uh, don't take advantage of this event with their trash. Um, you know, we often hear that, uh, what does a few hours do? What difference does it make? And last year was a much smaller event because we were still in the throes of the pandemic, but last year over three hundred volunteers removed over twenty thousand pounds of trash and over four hundred and fifty tires off of our city streets. In fact, over the last ten years, volunteers have removed over four hundred tons. It's eight hundred thousand pounds of trash and thousands of tires off of our city streets. So a few hours makes a huge difference. Um, this year, our T-shirts have been kind of have become known as kind of collector's items. And this year I am happy to show you the design. Love Harrisburg, which we probably do. Um, we're a little bit different this this year is the T-shirts are going to be first come, first served. So we have about three hundred available. Um, so if you want one of these fantastic event T-shirts, which have become collector's items, please show up a little, a few minutes early to ensure that you can grab one. I also want to specifically thank Dave West and the Public Works Department. This year we had some challenges finding a vendor who would take the street tires for recycling. And Dave was able to make that connection for us, find a vendor. Um, Public Works is also going to deliver those tires to that vendor for us, and we will be invoiced after the fact to be able to make that payment for the recycling. That would not have been able to happen this year without that collaborative effort from Dave and the Public Works Department. So I especially want to thank them.
Thank you so much. He's been mentioning, uh, the cleanup
Yes.
in his reporting. So thank you very much for sharing.
Thank you.
If you wouldn't mind sharing the website where everyone can pre-register one last time.
Sure, it is cactri county dot org slash GHLC.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to invite Ms. Rhonda Mays, Executive Director of the Harrisburg Fair Housing Council to share a presentation on the fiftieth anniversary.
Good evening, honorable members of council.
You want to turn your microphone on, please? That's okay.
Good on them.
Yes, thank you.
Um, good evening, the honorable members of City Council. I'm here tonight to, uh, represent the Fair Housing Council of the Capital Region, otherwise known as the Harrisburg Fair Housing Council. And as you, um, as you had said, um, this is our fiftieth anniversary. Uh, we started in nineteen seventy-three, really in response to the Civil Rights Act, the Fair Housing Act of nineteen sixty-eight. Um, the council was started by a group of community members and met in a small, uh, building in Summit Terrace, one of our historic neighborhoods within the community. Uh, over the years, um, we have become known as uh, one of the foremost, uh, civil rights organizations focused on housing. And we do all that we can every day to make sure that every resident in the community in the Tri-County area, that's Doffin, Cumberland and Perry Counties, have access to safe, affordable, dignified and uh, safe housing and affordable housing. Uh, so it's a pleasure to be here tonight to give you a little bit of background about the Fair Housing Council programs. Um, that started in the twentieth century and now we're going into the twenty-first century. Um, with a, a little bit of a different focus. But still, um, as our underlying mission, um, the, uh, the fair, um, housing rights of all members of our community. So as we all know, um, we have, uh, suffered some major losses. Um, in, starting in two thousand and twenty, when we lost our captain, our um, fore-chair, uh, the man that really um, laid the foundation for us to move forward over the decades. Um, Mel Johnson was a civil rights activist that, um, his focus at, in Harrisburg was fair housing, but in the state of Pennsylvania, it really was. Um, he really was an activist for all civil rights for all people. Um, his loss was, was tremendous, but the good news is that Mel laid a strong foundation for the organization going forward. And not just in, uh, housing and housing advocacy, but in many other, um, areas of, uh, inclusion within this community. Uh, we also lost, uh, Beverly Johnson, who was one of our, um, most experienced and long-term housing counselors, uh, at the council. And her loss was, um, you know, a tremendous shock to the staff. But, and, and we lost a lot of, um, institutional knowledge with Beverly and Mel. But, um, we have a lot of her documents and we have been able to follow in both of their footsteps. Uh, so we are very thankful for the many decades of service that Mel and Beverly gave to the council and to the community. We also lost one of our, um, longtime landlord tenant counselors in Chris Rice. And I would also like to memorialize her tonight. Um, she was um, a supporter of housing and of the community right up to pretty much the day that she passed away. Uh, so with that, I can say that going into the twenty-first century, the Fair Housing Council uh, is still, um, active. Thousands of residents, not just in the Tri-County area, but throughout Pennsylvania, when we talk about landlord tenant uh, helpline, um, call the council every year. And, uh, we have very capable staff that are able to give, um, you know, the renters and landlords the most up-to-date, precise, detailed information to help them to, uh, move forward with, uh, whatever issue that it is that they're facing as far as housing stability. Um, the homeownership program is well and strong at the council. I think I mentioned before that since its beginning in nineteen ninety, uh, over fourteen thousand individuals have passed through the, the workshop. And, uh, at this point, I, we have many thousands that have purchased a home uh, within the low to moderate income community. Um, most of them in Harrisburg. So we are very, um, pleased about the contribution to building the base of the community, the households of the community and and contributing to generational wealth and, um, and a commitment to Harrisburg and Dauphin County. So I would just like to thank the council, the city of Harrisburg for your many years of support of the work that we do at the council. I would also like to thank Dauphin County for their support and the state of Pennsylvania, um, who had supported the council also. Um, on behalf of the council, I thank you all and thank you for this opportunity to speak about our, our work um, serving our community.
Thank you so much. Don't leave yet. We have something for you to commemorate the fiftieth anniversary and today actually is the fifty-fifth anniversary of National Fair Housing Month.
Yes, April is, is Fair Housing Month.
Yep.
All through the nation.
So if you won't indulge me for just a moment, the City of Harrisburg, Pennsylvania proclamation. Whereas the City of Harrisburg applauds the Fair Housing Council of the Capital Region Incorporated for their dedicated service to the greater Harrisburg area for fifty years. And whereas the Fair Housing Council of the Capital Region Incorporated is a five oh one C three nonprofit charitable and educational organization that advocates to ensure accessible and fair housing opportunities for all persons without regard to race, color, age, national origin, religion, sexual orientation, gender identity, family status, presence of children, disability, ancestry, or marital status. And whereas the Fair Housing Council of the Capital Region Incorporated carries out their mission to provide comprehensive services that will affirmatively address and promote fair housing anti-discrimination rights. And whereas the Fair Housing Council of the Capital Region Incorporated provides program services, including homebuyer workshops, landlord tenant counseling services, and credit debt budget counseling services. And whereas April is National Fair Housing Month, this year commemorates the fifty-fifth anniversary of the Fair Housing Act, the landmark civil rights law, which was signed by President Lyndon B. Johnson on April eleventh, nineteen sixty-eight, making discrimination in housing transactions unlawful. The Fair Housing Act prohibits discrimination in housing because of race, color, national origin, religion, sex, disability, and familial status. And whereas the Fair Housing Council of the Capital Region Incorporated has remained relevant over the past fifty years and continues to flourish while achieving their mission to ensure access to accessible and fair housing opportunities for all persons within the city of Harrisburg and the greater Harrisburg area. And now therefore be it hereby proclaimed that Harrisburg City Council commends the Fair Housing Council of the Capital Region Incorporated for their dedication to providing access to housing for all. And be it further proclaimed that Harrisburg City Council wishes to extend best wishes for a successful fiftieth anniversary celebration. Signed and attested in the city of Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, Michael J. Parker City Clerk, Danielle L. Bowers, Harrisburg City Council. Wouldn't mind joining us in the front of the dais? Okay, we will now move to courtesy of the floor. Just a few housekeeping notes before we begin. Please state your name and your address for the meeting record. If you don't feel comfortable sharing your address, please share the vicinity in which you live. Um, you'll have two minutes to share your comments. And Mr. Parker will serve as our timekeeper. So I will begin to my right. Is there anyone that would like to offer public comment?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Michael Madden. I live on, at nine oh one Front Street. I oh, you can't hear me?
You speak directly into the microphone.
Okay, like this?
Yes, thank you.
I, I was here a couple of months ago. I, I tried to apply to get on the zoning hearing board and I submitted my resume. Um, I'm just checking back to see if there's any update on that. And if my application is declined, then if you could please let me know what next steps I could take to get on the board.
I will be back in touch with you. I will double check with, uh, Mr. Knight, but I don't believe there are currently any vacancies on the zoning hearing board, but I will double check. There's already a nominee. That's what, yeah. Right. So it is So it is and we'll potentially consider it for the upcoming vacancy at the end of the year.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to my right that would like to offer a public comment? Seeing and hearing no one, anyone in the middle section?
Council members. Good evening. My name is Demetra Diggs and I'm a Harrisburg resident. I live in the area of 15th and Hur where a recent crime was committed. And I'm coming today because I recently took on the task of moving back into this neighborhood. And I'm speaking out about the shooting that happened at 15th and Hur Street that occurred at 2:30 a.m. on Easter Sunday. This resulted in three bullets entering my neighbor's home, my elderly neighbor's home, and 48 inches away from my home. And our community needs your assistance. As a result of the activities that continuously happens and transpires at D and L's Good Hood Food that's located at 1501 Hur Street, there is a fear in our community that we will be harmed just by living in proximity to this business. There have been numerous occasions when loud music, arguments, and disruptions wake us up. Many times, the 15th Street is blocked up with a line of cars waiting for food. There's groups of people outside congregating. There's a bright light that will shine until 3:00 or 4:00 a.m. This morning today, I heard the gates close at 3:00 in the morning and the lights turned off at 3:00, giving me only three hours to prepare for my day that began at 6:00 in the morning. This differs from any regular neighborhood bodega because they're listed on popular food apps such as DoorDash, Grubhub, which brings an influx of traffic into our residential neighborhood. A group of us attempted to speak with the store owner who was combative and suggested that this was a problem for the city police to handle and didn't seem willing to come up with a solution. I spoke with the community center that's directly across the street today and was told that they have witnessed drug and gun activity in front of the store and that it's no secret, everybody knows what goes on over there. We just tell the children to choose which side of the street that they want to stand on, and this should not become the norm, and it has been. There's a community consensus that this business is a public nuisance that threatens the health, safety, and welfare of the residents that live near this business. Many residents are hesitant to shop here for fear of getting hurt. Many items that are sold there don't support what we need. And there's an extreme fear of speaking out. People will tell you what their experiences are, but they don't want to go on record to say what's happening, which, you know, a solution that I understand that you have to do is they, you know, we've been told knock on doors, get the community engaged, but they're scared and us doing that puts us at another risk. So, you know, my question is, why isn't the shooting into a home of a Harrisburg citizen enough? The hours of this store, I think, is a big problem for our neighborhood. The lack of security, the impact, it impacts our safety. It disrupts our property value. It puts a blemish on this neighborhood. This late night hours, we just have traffic flowing all hours of the night. We want your help. We're asking, please help us. We feel trapped in our homes. A lot of times, we won't even go out the front door. We'll go out our back doors because we don't want that interaction or to be seen. I think that the business owner should have a social and a legal responsibility to support the community where he conducts business. And unfortunately, the residents in the area are the ones suffering. And I just want to know, like, when does the safety of our residents become the priority over the profits of a business that directly impacts one person over this community?
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Valerie Cobb and I too live in the vicinity of 15th and Hur. I've been there approximately, approximately three years, gone on three years. And in moving there, I have, since living there, I have experienced a lot of situations that's been happening right outside my front door. So one of the things that I was trying to do was see if I can get anyone else on board to bring awareness to what's going on. And in speaking with my neighbor, Demetria is my neighbor, a lot of individuals in this neighborhood knows what's going on. When I first moved there, when I first bought the house, I lived there with my two older sisters. And my older sister is a senior citizen. The two of us, her and I, work from home. So we see a lot of stuff going on because I work from home. I have another sister that actually goes out into the community to work. She doesn't have the luxury of staying home. I don't know if it's safer at my house or at her job, but I digress. But anyways, she's concerned because she comes in later in the evening when all the business is going on. She gets off at 9:30. And so all the business is going on. I, the one thing that I wanted to speak to is the fact that there was a shooting Easter right outside my door. And I did not hear that. Now, my concern is, why didn't I hear that? Am I getting numb to what's going on around me? And I don't want to get numb to what's going on around me, simply because that puts me at risk and my family that lives there. And so had she not told me what went on, I'd have never known. I've been, before we built, I built my, had my privacy fence built, my sister, my two sisters were out in the backyard only to be confronted by someone running through, cutting through our backyard, trying to get away from another individual shooting at. So they had to run in and take cover. So me not being from this area, I just, I moved here after my late husband passed away. So I relocated here, did the work, and then decided that I was going to buy a home in Pennsylvania. But I have never, I've lived in at least four different states. I have never witnessed anything like I see across the street. And I'm grateful to Demetria moving in to take on that task to basically come together and try and do something even coming down here. So we're begging for help from you because I couldn't get it from anyone else. That was the ring. Okay, so basically, in a nutshell, that's all I have.
Thank you. If you ladies wouldn't mind saying after our meeting so you can speak with Councilman Rodriguez, who's our Public Safety Chair. Unfortunately, Councilwoman Daniels, who's our Community and Economic Development Chair, isn't here this evening, but we can certainly try to find some solution. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the middle that would like to offer a public comment? Okay, seeing and hearing no one, anyone to my left? Seeing and hearing no one, we will move forward with our agenda. Next, we have the approval of minutes for the legislative session that occurred on March 14, 2023. Council members, are there any revisions to the minutes? Seeing and hearing none, the minutes stand approved. We will now move to reports of committees. The first report you will hear this evening will be from Chair Lawson on behalf of the Public Works Committee on the work session of April 4, 2023. Chair Lawson?
Thank you, President Bowers. First, I want to apologize to my colleagues, to the people attending here and the people watching online as I did show up a few minutes behind. And I want to offer you my sincere apologies. There was no excuse for that. But on April 4, the Public Works Committee met to receive the year-to-date first quarter report. The Public Works and Engineering Committee was pretty busy as we were told by Deputy Director Austin Griffin and Engineering Percy Bullock. The department took in 1,001,02 PA1 calls and marked in orange and red. And they also took in 75 PA1 calls marked in white. They installed 62 handicapped signs, poles in base included. They made 640 signs out of the traffic shop, marked 200 lights for repair, removed empty poles throughout the city of 312 and replaced poles, basin signs that were knocked down of 29, and painted 10 curves. 31 signs and post base were installed throughout the city. They fixed 207 streetlights, the Cobra Head version, and fixed 41 decorative streetlights. They cleaned up from the New Year's Eve event two large type 3, two small type 3, and 34 water barricades, 37 pedestrian barricades, three type 1, 34 cones, one arrowboard, three large message boards, three light towers, one no-left-turn sign, one small sign stand, one small message board. They cleaned up 150 cones, two message boards, and one arrowboard from the farm show building and cleaned up above, cleaned up from the outdoor show as well. 150 cones, two message boards, flipped four signs to left turn on Cameron Street, opened the left lane and uncovered the left turn signal head at Cameron and Alzey. They cleaned up three type 3 large, four type 3 small, 83 water barricades, two planter boxes, 25 pedestrian barricades, three metal barricades, 10 type 1, 44 cones, four road closed signs, three arrowheads, one large message board, one generator, five light towers, four small sign stands, 10 electrical cord ramps for the fire and ice event. They put out five type 3 large, four type 3 small, 63 water barricades, two planter boxes, 25 pedestrian barricades, three metal barricades, 52, one, 124 cones, seven road closed signs, four arrowboards, two large message boards, one generator, seven small sign stands and two electrical cords for the Lucky Charm Race and the St. Patty's Day Parade. And then they cleaned up five type 3 large, five type 3 large, four type 3 small, 63 water barricades, two planter boxes, 25 pedestrian barricades, three metal barricade, 52 type 1, 124 cones, seven road closed signs and four arrowboards, two message boards. Unfortunately, I just made you go through this all over again because I just reread the same thing over. So basically, they've painted the north parking lot for City Island. They cut and repaired the conduit for streetlights to Market Street to get them out of the way for a contractor. They inspected 72 signal cabinets, installed delineators on Industrial Road, looks like 63 of them. 173 PA1 calls were marked in orange and red and fixed 18 streetlights. Those were included earlier. And they are in the process of purchasing two recycling trucks using grant money. They should be reimbursed for the tune of $500,000. And we are currently looking to fill a heavy equipment operator position, one labor position, and we also need to replace a sign technician as a sign technician was hired as an engineering tech. A statement was made that any citizen who wants to perform bulk cleanup can contact Public Works for pickup of their refuse. And also, we were told that the State Street redesign project is waiting for the state of Pennsylvania to give us an okay on the plan before we're able to do anything to move forward. And that concludes my report for Public Works.
Thank you, Chair Lawson. The next report you will hear will be from Chair Majors on behalf of the Building and Housing Committee on the work session of April 4, 2023. Chair Majors?
Thank you, President Bowers. On April 4, the Building and Housing Committee met to receive two reports. One was from our Communications Director, Mr. Matt Mazzell. And our second report was from, quarterly report was from the Bureau of Information Technology with Director Portner. For COMS, Mr. Mazzell gave us an overview of the increased traffic that the city website is receiving over the last year as we continue to increase the number of posts and articles and press releases that are posted to the site. The number one mechanism for outreach via the city has been the city's Facebook page, which now has over 13,000 followers to it. We're also seeing a lot of growth with WHBG due to some of the new programming that is available there. Mr. Mazzell noted that if there are residents interested in talking about their, any businesses or activities that they have going on in the city of Harrisburg, they can reach out to COMS to be featured on the city's, any of the city's programming. Additionally, one of the bigger items from this report was the information that the city will finally be, look at the contract with Illuminated Integration come July and August to revamp the microphones and camera infrastructure for city council chambers. This has been a project that has been long awaited. So we will have a complete redesign of our microphones and system here. So we'll be better able to communicate to the public and get it out via Channel 20 and as well as YouTube. Also, for that, we're going to be able to continue to have all of our closed captioning and additional upgrades that can happen to this infrastructure. So we'll be able to have additional channels coming in so we can have the video on, and the video monitoring that's going to be projected here from any reports that come directly onto our YouTube and our city council viewing sessions as well as that closed captioning that I mentioned. The city's newsletter is up to having over 3,900 subscribers to it. So those were the big highlights from Mr. Mazzell's report for Mr. Portner, the city's transition from our aging database system to a cloud-based system for all of the city's networking and storage, data storage needs is on pace right now. So we are looking to move over our tax billing operations in quarter three. Licenses and codes should be occurring this quarter. Utility billing will be moving over to the new system in quarter two. Our asset management is looking to move over in this month as well. We have over 4,400 hours of employee time dedicated to this transition. So far, we have spent $1.342 million of the contract and we have $820,000 remaining there for the water damage that occurred to this, our base, which had some of our data storage. We're finishing moving all of our mainframe storage to a remote storage in Omaha, Nebraska. That should be happening on April 21. Based upon the damage that occurred, we are looking at an $135,000 adjustment to be able to move the mainframe there. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Chair Majors. The final report that you will hear this evening, I will share on behalf of our Community and Economic Development Committee Chair, Councilwoman Daniels. Councilwoman Daniels on the work session of April fourth, two thousand and twenty-three. On Tuesday, April fourth, two thousand and twenty-three, the Community and Economic Development Committee met to discuss the first quarter report of the Planning Bureau. Mr. Jeffrey Knight, Planning Director, was present to share the report. Mr. Knight shared the following information. From January first of two thousand and twenty-three through March thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-three, a total of two hundred and thirty-one work log entries were made, including forty-seven building permits, twenty mercantile permits, and thirty write-to-no requests, ten variance and special exception applications, four subdivision and land development plans. There were no street vacations, but there were six floodplain development reviews. Mr. Knight also discussed the ongoing administrative assistance needed within the Bureau. There is currently a vacancy available for the Deputy Planning Director and Historic Preservation Specialist. This concludes the report of the Community and Economic Development Committee. We do not have any ordinances for first reading nor ordinances for amendment, and there are no ordinances for final passage. We will now move to resolutions. We will begin with Resolution twenty-seven of two thousand and twenty-three. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Yes. Resolution twenty-seven dash twenty-two-three. A resolution confirming the reappointment of Tiffany E. Baldock, Esquire, to serve as the Senior Deputy City Solicitor for the City of Harrisburg.
Thank you. Council members, are there any questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution twenty-seven of two thousand and twenty-three? Okay, seeing and hearing none, Mr. Parker, could you please call the vote?
Yes. Ms. Daniels? Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Rawls?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
And Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-seven of twenty-two-three passes unanimously, six yays, zero nays, including the absence of Ms. Daniels.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution thirty of two thousand and twenty-three. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution thirty dash twenty-two-three. A resolution appointing Mr. Ed Jarrack to serve on the Audit Committee for the City of Harrisburg.
Council members, are there any questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution thirty of two thousand and twenty-three? I do have one comment just for the record. We did receive Mr. Jarrack's Statement of Financial Interest Form that was needed prior to us taking action on the resolution. So I just wanted to note that. Mr. Parker, could you please call the vote?
Yes. Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Rawls?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Resolution thirty of twenty-two-three passes unanimously, six yays, zero nays, including the absence of Councilwoman Daniels.
Thank you very much. We will now move forward with Resolution thirty-one of two thousand and twenty-three. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution thirty-one dash twenty-two-three. A resolution appointing Mr. Andre Campbell to serve on the Audit Committee for the City of Harrisburg.
Thank you. Council members, are there any questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution thirty-one of two thousand and twenty-three? Again, I have one comment. We did receive Mr. Campbell's Statement of Financial Interest Form that will allow us to vote on this resolution. Mr. Parker, could you please call the vote?
Yes. Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Rawls?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Resolution thirty-one of twenty-two-three passes unanimously, six yays to zero nays, including the absence of Councilwoman Daniels.
Thank you very much. The next resolution for consideration is Resolution thirty-two of two thousand and twenty-three. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution thirty-two dash twenty-two-three. A resolution appointing Ms. Jamie Roberts to serve on the Audit Committee for the City of Harrisburg.
Thank you. Council members, are there any questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution thirty-two of two thousand and twenty-three? Okay, seeing and hearing none, I have one comment. We did receive Ms. Roberts' Statement of Financial Interest Form, so that will allow us to vote on this resolution. Mr. Parker, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Rawls?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Resolution thirty-two of twenty-two-three passes unanimously, six yays to zero nays, including the absence of Councilwoman Daniels.
Thank you. Our final resolution for consideration this evening is Resolution thirty-three of two thousand and twenty-three. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution thirty-three dash twenty-two-three. A resolution appointing Mr. Austin Cheers to serve on the Audit Committee for the City of Harrisburg.
Thank you. Council members, are there any questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution thirty-three of two thousand and twenty-three? Seeing and hearing none. Again, my final comment, we did receive Mr. Cheers, his Statement of Financial Interest Form, which will permit us to vote on this resolution. Mr. Parker, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Rawls?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Resolution thirty-three of twenty-two-three passes unanimously, six yays to zero nays, including the absence of Councilwoman Daniels.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We have Resolution thirty-four of two thousand and twenty-three. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution thirty-four of twenty-two-three. A resolution ratifying the submission of a grant application to the Federal Emergency Management Agency's Hazard Mitigation Grant Program for the development of a cost-benefit analysis of the Paxton Creek De-Channelization Project and authorizing the City of Harrisburg to designate Marita J. Kelly as the designee for execution of the grant agreement and related documents.
Thank you. Resolution thirty-four of two thousand and twenty-three will move to the Administration Committee. Next, we have Resolution thirty-five of two thousand and twenty-three. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution thirty-five dash twenty-two-three. A resolution approving the preliminary slash final land development and lot consolidation plan for twenty-seven oh nine and twenty-seven seventeen North Front Street, submitted by Adam Kerr with E I twenty-seven oh nine North Front Street LLC to demolish the existing office buildings on the subject properties, combine the lots into a single parcel, and construct a twenty-one-unit multifamily dwelling.
Thank you. Resolution thirty-five of two thousand and twenty-three will move to the Community and Economic Development Committee. Resolution thirty-six of two thousand and twenty-three, Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution thirty-six dash twenty-two-three. A resolution approving the preliminary slash final land development plan for two oh two State Street, submitted by W I C Partners to convert an existing office building into a four-unit multifamily dwelling.
Thank you. Resolution thirty-six of two thousand and twenty-three will move to the Community and Economic Development Committee. Resolution thirty-seven of two thousand and twenty-three, Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution thirty-seven dash twenty-two-three. A resolution approving the preliminary slash final land development, lot consolidation, and subdivision plan for twenty-one fifty-one to twenty-one sixty-one North Fourth Street, submitted by Gary Lenker with Tri-County H D C Limited to consolidate and re-subdivide the various lots comprising the project site into five separate parcels on which affordable townhomes will be constructed along with associated improvements.
Thank you. Resolution thirty-seven of two thousand and twenty-three will move to the Community and Economic Development Committee.
Madam President, just just for the council's knowledge, this one has a short deadline for deemed approval of May second. So if there are any delays, we would, you would be right up against it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next we have Resolution thirty-eight of two thousand and twenty-three. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution thirty-eight dash twenty-two-three. A resolution appointing Mr. Seth Rubenstein to serve on the Harrisburg Planning Commission.
Thank you. Resolution thirty-eight of two thousand and twenty-three will move to the Administration Committee. Next, we have Resolution thirty-nine of two thousand and twenty-three. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution thirty-nine dash twenty-two-three. A resolution appointing Mr. Jason Graves to serve on the Board of the Susquehanna Regional Transportation Authority.
Thank you. Resolution thirty-nine of two thousand and twenty-three will move to the Administration Committee. Resolution forty of two thousand and twenty-three. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution forty dash twenty-two-three. A resolution appointing Ms. Joanne Gray to serve on the Zoning Hearing Board of the City of Harrisburg.
Thank you. Resolution forty of two thousand and twenty-three will move to the Administration Committee. Our final resolution, Resolution forty-one of two thousand and twenty-three. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution forty-one dash twenty-two-three. A resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services agreement with Navarro and Wright Consulting Engineers Incorporated to design universally accessible A D A compliant playgrounds and other amenities for the Seventh and Radnor Park, Gorgas Park, Wilson Playground, and Reservoir Park.
Thank you. Resolution forty-one of two thousand and twenty-three will move to the Parks Recreation and Enrichment Committee. Council members, is there any old business for discussion tonight? Okay, seeing and hearing none, any new business? Vice President Green?
Yes, thank you, President Bowers. I would just like to announce to everyone, I know it was announced last week, but just to announce again that Harrisburg City Council will be hosting a series of town halls to discuss the American Rescue Plan Act funding that the city received. We're looking to hear your voice as the city prepares to spend more than twenty-five million dollars. The meetings will be held as follows. Tomorrow, April twelfth, from five-thirty to seven-thirty P M here at the M L K Government Center. April thirteenth, from five-thirty to seven-thirty P M at the Cam Curtain Y M C A at twenty-one thirty-five North Sixth Street. And then Saturday, April fifteenth, from eleven A M until one P M at Mount Olive Baptist Church at thirteen thirty-one South Fourteenth Street. Flyers are in the back, and you can find all this information online as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilman Lawson, did you have a new business item?
Um, yes, President Bowers. C R W is beginning to reactivate their their terminations in the month of April. So I wanted to remind citizens that there is a customer assistance program that is being underutilized. So please go to the C R W website, Capital Region Water, and apply for assistance if you are in danger of your services being terminated. Just wanted to make sure that everyone knew that there is help out there.
Thank you. I have two notes before we adjourn. Uh, first, I wanted to let everyone know that the quarterly reports, the summations that you heard this evening and the reports that we receive uh, from the administration through the department or bureau directors are available online through e-codes. That is the quarterly reports for two thousand and twenty-two and two thousand and twenty-three so far. So I just wanted to note that availability, if anyone would like to review them. I also wanted to note that this week, beginning today through April seventeenth, is Black Maternal Health Week two thousand and twenty-three. The theme for this year is "Our Bodies Belong to Us: Restoring Black Autonomy and Joy." In light of the steadily alarming rise of maternal mortality in the U S, which recent data shows has been exacerbated by the pandemic and amidst growing cases of clear neglect in care and hospital systems immediately after labor and delivery, the Black Mamas Matter Alliance continues to highlight and center culturally congruent practices with a focus on black midwifery, uh, care, and full-spectrum black-led doula care as sound, evidence-based solutions. But April eleventh through April seventeenth is Black Maternal Health Week. It's a week-long campaign founded and led by the Black Mamas Matter Alliance to build awareness, activism, and community building to amplify the voices, perspectives, and lived experiences of black mamas and birthing people. This, the week is intentionally held during National Minority Health Month and begins on April eleventh annually to join dozens of global organizations in making this day, or marking this day, excuse me, as International Day for Maternal Health and Rights. If you're interested in learning more about the Black Mamas Matter Alliance, you can visit their website at blackmamasmatter.org. So I just wanted to highlight that observance. The time is six fifty-six P M. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We stand adjourned. Thank you, everyone.